Robert Nigeria.
Here.
Scott Martin.
Here.
Paul Vasarela.
Here.
Benny Markin, Ohio.
Here.
Yael Denoni.
Here.
Christopher DeWiel.
Here.
Here.
Thank you.
Before we continue to, to, I wanted to just double check for the continuance. Mike is absent and Paul was absent the first time, but we still had, I think there are four members here present at least who heard the first part of the Elizabeth Act decision, correct? Just double check, I would care, but I believe it's correct. You can just let me know. And the second item to the board members, I'd like to propose a revision to the agenda. We'd like to take item eight and make it item five. So the status update for appeal of Jake's Farm LLC would go after item four, which is the disclosure notice and anything else would be pushed down accordingly. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to move item number eight to item number five and push the rest of them next time.
We have a second.
I'll second in a minute.
We have a second. Elizabeth.
Hi.
Opposed? Okay. Item number three on the agenda. Disclosure of no compensation or pension credits received by the board members. We're all here serving voluntarily and were appointed by the town. Item number four. Disclosure and notice zoning board of review members shall disclose any extraneous communications about any contested or material due to the torture of facts or opinions concerning the merits of any application before the zoning board of review. Now we will entertain item five, which is the status update for the appeal of Jake's Farm LLC. As members know, I'm accusing myself from this case. So I'll turn the chair over to the vice chairman, Mr. Martin, and he can conduct this aspect of the meeting.
Thank you. All right, I just wrote down some notes here. I want to make sure I keep this shooting right. So basically, just so everyone understands what's going to transpire. We are sitting here tonight as the zoning board of review. We're not sitting here as the zoning board. I'm sorry, we're sitting here as the zoning board of appeals. We're not sitting here as the zoning board of review. Basically, what we're trying to do is get a date certain for this case to be heard. So that's pretty much what we're doing tonight. Is there going to be no testimony or discussion on any of these information? Because they're all kind of here. It's just getting a date certain. So that being said. Let's start with. Do we have a counsel here for Mr. Jakes' folks?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Michelle. I'm sorry. Hawes is on Zoom. H A W E S. Go ahead, Ms. Hawes. Or.
Hello.
Hello. So you're the attorney representing Jakes Farm?
The firm that I work for, DeSoto Law, is representing Jake's Farm. There is another, there are other attorneys at that firm. I know that the partner Karen Browning is probably most likely to be handling the hearing in this matter once the date is set, is certain. But I will be assisting her. So I am here tonight on behalf of that client, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could she spell the firm name, please?
Do you spell the attorney?
Yes. D E S A U T E L.
Thank you.
Okay, so the assault. Well, since attorney Karen Browning from that girlfriend, that will be counsel for the Jax Farm?
That's correct.
So the second thing we have to do is set a date certain. So. How long, we're thinking, is 30 days enough for you to have a date certain? What do you?
We were hopefully looking for a date in June. If you would be so kind to accommodate us that extra time. But I understand that you wanted, that you would like to move this as quickly as possible. So we're willing to entertain any date if we need to earlier than that, but would really like until June if possible.
Yeah, this has been on our agenda for quite some time. So we kind of want to get, get to it. You know, we can entertain it as a board, but how far off to go? You know, what's a board that, you know, 30, 45 days?
Quite a while. 30 days, I think, is appropriate. Is it enough time?
We, we, we literally have just been retained by the client in this matter and have just received a lot of the paperwork that have, has been underlying the claim yesterday. And I do believe there has been some settlement discussions in the past that I believe our office wanted to revisit and we want like enough time to have the opportunity to do that. We understand getting a date certain on the calendar. If we can't push it all the way to June, we would really need at least until May.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Major.
I think major of time. Jake's had quite some time to find himself and move lawyer.
Right.
I don't even know that these lawyers have entered their appearance in case, have asked for it twice. This board, as far as I know, doesn't have an interview appearance or a letter of representation. I think may as well.
And as far as aware, there's no formal entry of appearance before the zoning board. And we are here tonight and we have put on the record that we do represent Mr. Jakes. So if there's any question as to that, then I'll be happy to confirm that DeSoto Law does represent Mr. Jakes. And I believe you have all of our contact information as well.
Okay. So like I said, 30 days, you know, would be good. I'd be a little stretched at 45, would we put you into the main time period?
Correct. We will, we will do 45 if, because that puts us within, I believe, the timeframe that we can do.
Okay. All right, so 45 days from now, when we get that date, and then do we have a date of earnings agreement and we get to do that after 45 days or after 45 days?
27 days.
How far out is the 24th? I mean, yeah.
That's closer to. That's closer to 60 days.
Is it?
May 10th.
We did years, what did you say?
Uh, May 10th. That's the regularly, regularly scheduled meeting in May.
Does that work? May 10th? That's about 45 days, right? Does that work here? Is it?
Buzz.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes. As I said before, the more time that we can get, the more we would, we appreciate it. But I understand the opposing counsel's desire and the board's desire to set a date and to move this, so May 10th is acceptable if that's the furthest out that we can get.
So we'll have to hear a motion for that.
May 1st.
Yes.
I just want it to be made perfectly, 1,000% clear. This is a final date.
I, I, I understand.
But I don't think the board would be inclined to entertain another request for an attorney.
Yeah, let me, let me just jump in for a minute. It's a talent solicitor, Stephen Oshinbo. With all due respect to every member of the board, let's not get into the merits of anything or putting down, throwing down the gauntlet for final dates or anything like that. All that's before the board right now is to pick the date. So if we're at 45 days and it's going to go an extra week, and that seems reasonable for the applicant to have their attorney up to speed, that's it. And you take a consensus right now, make a motion, set that date. And we have to give notice to all the abutters and we have to give new advertisement. All right, and we already know that this attorney's on board. But respectfully, let's not get into anything about how it's the last date, final date. Board's meeting convening as a board of review, and I mean, as a appellate board tonight. Let's just focus on what's before us. Thank you.
All right, so I'll take a motion. I'll make a motion to move the hearing to May 10th. The attorney.
Paul Second.
Uh, roll over. Do you move on this?
Scott, hi. Scott, nice. Scott Martin.
Yes.
Paul Vasarela.
Yes.
Benny Markin, Ohio. Yael Denoni.
Yeah.
Chris.
No problem.
In the front.
Okay, the only other two things, DeSoto Ball's needed. There'll need to be a new notice sent out to all the abutters and it will need to be re-advertised. Okay, so make a second on that.
Mr. Chairman, it's going to get across to the advertiser.
I'm not sure what to say to that. I mean, that's in the house. It'll be out of people's business. I had a brief conversation with Mr. Jakes a couple of weeks ago and I told him he'd be responsible for any cost involved in the advertising he sent by. All right. So that'll leave Mr. Oshinbo for that. Let's cover everything we need to cover.
Yeah, that's it. Thanks. We set the date. We know the attorney's on board now with their firm representing them. We've got a public notice that we're going to re-advertise it and we're going to give all the abutters notice again. And clearly the applicant has to pay because they asked for the continuance. So I think that wraps it up. Miss, Miss Hawes, anything else on behalf of your firm?
Just, just on behalf of my firm, just to clarify a point I just heard. I have not spoken to Mr. Jakes in regard to any of the costs associated with it. So I don't have any knowledge in regards to what he may or may not have agreed to in that regards.
Yeah, that's okay. He doesn't have to agree. When the applicant needs the continuance to get counsel, he pays for it. It's that simple. Otherwise, the application would be withdrawn. So just extend that notice to him. I don't know if he's listening on Zoom or not, but that's state law. That's the way it is, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you.
No, Chairman, that's it. Those are the, those are the fine points.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll turn it back over to the board.
Thank you. At this point, we'll. Item six. And both item six and item seven of the minutes for both March 1st and March 8th are not available. The secretary is working on them and we will expedite the preparation and get them the numbers. And we will have them before the next meeting. So there's, there's not to discuss proof. So that brings us to items eight, which is the continuance of the application of Rado of 118 Elizabeth Avenue. For instance, the appeal to build and test grounds with freeway to the single family dwelling. 118 Elizabeth Avenue, P3-077. And within seeks relief from section 4.2, non-conforming lots of record. At 5.5, 0.1 side setback at lot covered in the Arden District. Principal dwelling was built under a grant or a variance from the zoning board issued on May 24th, 2004. We'll pick up where we left off, but as you know, we continued this. We were given information today, which is exactly what has asked the applicant not to do. We've had zero time as a board to truly digest what you've presented to us. With, with that in mind, I mean, we will proceed, but I also will give the board the opportunity to continue this and give us a chance to digest this information if we so choose. Because in turn, it's to you, the applicant, and to us, the only way we can make sound decisions is at that time to digest the information provided. Let me get back onto the legal track of what needs to be entered into additional cases. So I'll check and see. We had the site plan. We had a P6 and a P6A. P6 was the original submission. P6A was submitted at the first meeting by the applicant. We were told at that time that P6 was not accurate. And that's why, and then we were told that P6A was not accurate. So what we'll call this, we have a new site plan. And even with logic, we'll call this P6B. P6B. Site plan prepared by the same insight engineering by Mr. Diiver. Then the surveyors staff number is 1777. And this is dated March 16th of 2020. 2022, 2026, sorry, 2022, March 16th. And this just indicates that it's a site plan. Now, since this is, we'll call this, was P6 our last actual, so the next plan we'll call P6. That's also a drawing prepared by Insight, same engineer, Mr. Diiver. That's also dated March 16th of 2022. This one is titled variance plan option one. And this shows the proposed location, which seems to be, let the applicant explain, but it seems to be somewhat in concert with the original submission, but they can get up and explain the differences. P7. P8 will be an additional plan, same prepared by Insight engineers, also stamped by Mr. Diiver. Also dated March 16th of 2022. This one is dated and is titled variance plan option two. Let the applicant get length of some differences. P9 will be the third drawing, the fourth drawing submitted. Again, for Insight, also dated the 16th of March, 2022. This one is titled variance plan option three. We have.
Yes.
So then we have what we'll call P10. Somewhat an architectural drawing. Two-page drawing. It's drawn by Richard O'Roniger Belanger. Now a contractor, both of the works. The only, it says provided to December 21st. Specific page on it. At the second page. Foundation plan. Two-page drawing. Uh, P11 will be a series of photographs. That's 13, 13 pages of photographs provided by the applicant on a grado via email, I believe, to the building of the zoning official. These are pictures of the property. So with that said, and then we also have if it's a copy of, we'll call this P12. So it's an additional picture, which we could probably incorporate into P11. That's just a single sheet. I believe it was only two thousand.
Oh, okay.
So we can, we can distribute the copy and we can look at it.
Yes.
That'll be P12, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Would you like to make some copies so everybody has them?
Uh, I don't, I don't think it's that. We'll spread it around. I don't, I don't think it's that significant, but if members want it, then you can. So what I'd like to do is have the applicant, please come forward to the podium and remember to identify yourself, follow the star, present questions, please.
Your name is addressed to the record, please now.
Martha Prado, G R A T C O. 118 Elizabeth Avenue, Smithfield, Raleigh.
Thank you.
Uh, did you want to have her go for testimony and?
Of course.
Yeah.
Thank you. You've done this, you've done this, and this match will be the truth.
All right, if you could, I think if you need the help of your builder, please join us. But again, before you speak, sir, just introduce yourself. But what I'd like to do, so we clear the tables of all of these drawings. Please tell me, the board, whether P6 and P6A, which were the original site plan drawings, are they still valid? Have they, have they been substituted by what you submitted today? They're speaking of like.
There's an issue with the current one that was.
Well, hold on, backtrack, please. Just explain. P6 and what we call P6A. And we just need to know, again. P6 was the one you mailed in with the original application. Is that valid or invalid?
Well, we have two, we have two different scenarios, as the board has asked.
No, I understand. Those are different. This is the original P6 that just showed.
Can I show her?
Well, no, the builder is there. He should be able to. That's Mr. Belanger. P6 was the site plan and was submitted originally. Correct. Is that still valid or is it not?
Yes, that is still valid.
Sir, I'm sorry, how's your name?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Roger Belanger.
Going to the right.
A N G E R.
Thank you, Roger.
Yeah, we need to square it in the book.
Okay, thank you, Roger. You sound swift in testimony about the business match will be the truth before we can.
I do.
Thank you, sir.
So you recall that you had come here the first meeting and you told us that P6A was incorrect? So I'm at a loss. What, what drawing are we supposed to take as gospel here? Or do we just revert to the option A and option B or plan A and plan B?
That's what we, yeah, the plan A, plan B, that's what we're going on right now.
Okay, so that's, I just wanted a clear answer. So you're telling us that essentially we do not need to look at P6 and P6A, which were the drawings from the last meeting?
Okay.
Which were, you agree?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what I remember from the last meeting is regarding this.
Just put it below.
Oh, it's on.
Oh, it is on, I'm sorry. Yeah.
What I recall from the last meeting was that P6 was insufficient because it did not contain the conforming lines. And the site plan that was presented today does.
That's correct, but it's still inaccurate. But point well taken, but so, so now what we're going to do is we're going to look at what we're calling P6B, which is the site plan that shows the side yard, the interior side yard is 23 feet. Just shows the actual sitting, the building sitting there as it is today. Correct. The issue I still have with this drawing is that the surveyor, the engineers did not do what we asked them to do, which was they wanted to see the overlay of the zoning lines onto the drawing. So it was clear what was in violation and they still have not done that. I don't know if they misunderstood your direction. It's a pretty clear direction when you're preparing a drawing for zoning relief. You must show us where the overlay lines are so we can grasp the magnitude. It's not our job to sit here and do that. So that isn't correct. We get back to that. So P7 is what you're calling option one. So Mr. Belanger, if it's easier, why don't you want us to briefly, how does option one staring from what you presented previously?
This might be the mic off this, sir.
So the one I have in front of me is various plan option two.
Oh, no, I have option one. This is called option one. I want to do that in order.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, option one. This was the, the one that we proposed, but what we have now done with option two is we've conformed with it back. So the 19, we can change to 20, shorten up the garage instead of 23, we should do 22. And the 38.8, we can shorten up the building to conform to give you the 40 feet on the rear.
All right, so hold on. You jumped from option two to option one back and forth. So if members put both drawings in front of them, the rear on both is shown as 38.8 feet.
Correct.
Depth on option two is 22 as opposed to 23. But I don't understand, why is the 7.6 the same on both drawings if the depth of the garage has changed?
Because we're taking it from the, from the sideline, not from the front of, of Smith Street.
Yeah, but something doesn't make sense. You, you have 19 as your interior on option one. You have 20 on your interior.
Yeah, it's going, it's going from 23 feet deep to 22 feet. We've taken a foot off the garage.
No, I get that, but what you didn't do is you didn't do anything to push the structure towards the interior lot, correct?
I mean, correct.
I mean, indirectly, you reduced the depth, but you didn't put it back. You just, you didn't move it back. You just lock up a foot on the interior side.
Correct.
And what is not accurate about this drawing?
Unfortunately.
I don't want that.
All right, now we're trying to get all the insight to rectify 38.8 to 40. And then, but he's all, he's on vacation and there's nobody there to pursue the thing.
But can you please clarify, if 38.8 becomes 40, what happens to the 23?
23 ends up shrinking down to 20, 22, or actually 21. Twenty-three ends up shrinking down to, uh, twenty, twenty-two, or actually twenty-one, uh, twenty-eight.
Hold on, what, what the, you, you're saying to us that you are going to, on, on plan two, you reduce the depth by one foot. And you're saying that you intended to reduce the other dimension, the width. By the difference between thirty-eight point eight and forty.
Which would be sixty inches.
Yeah. So the twenty-three is on both drawings and that would be changed.
Correct.
And is there a reason why? Uh, you can't. Push it back so that the, that twenty interior lot dimension becomes the nineteen? Uh, understanding that you've already locked up, I'm not talking about the footprint of the structure, I'm talking about its location. If you take option two, which is twenty-two foot deep. And if you move it so that the interior lot line setback is nineteen instead of twenty, that would pick up. That would make the street side eight foot, eight point six.
Correct.
Is there a reason why that wasn't proposed?
Um, just. One second.
Uh, if you want to speak, please identify yourself.
Just right to the microphone, sir.
My name is John Brown.
John Brown?
Don.
John Brown?
One young lane, right in Massachusetts.
Let's wait, thank you, you sound swift.
One of the reasons they didn't show that on, or request that is. And we were viewing it as a request for two different variants, one of the. Nineteen foot side and one in front of the garage by the Smith Street side.
Oh, excuse me, sir, could you? Could you identify yourself, are you a professional or?
I'm a friend.
Friend, James, yeah, thanks.
So what we, what we were looking at there is let's, let's only ask for variance on the Smith Street side instead of asking from both sides. But if you're willing to consider pushing it back. And giving this a nineteen foot variance on, on the one twelve Elizabeth Street side and extending the front of the garage. I don't see any issue with that at all.
Well, again, I, I, the zoning officials can speak to whether, I don't believe you would have to know. Two different, it would be one, one relief in two different directions, correct? So it, it's, it's just a nuance of sorts. I mean, the relief would be all encompassing if it happens to be on both sides. Then, yeah, and it's, and it's pretty clear that the board seemed to indicate their preference. Towards granting relief when the setback was at its greatest, so. You can consider as you'd like, again, I can, I will not, no one here will tell us what to do. We can only, you can, you can infer from what we're saying, what you think you should. Um, but I still think we're at, okay, so we understand this. Are you saying that the twenty-two foot depth? Uh, is the least depth you need?
That would, that would be the minimum, well, an adequate room with the car in, in her storage, yes.
Okay. And is there a reason that, do we need to review these pictures or they just sent, are they just the type for?
Pictures were for safety reasons, so when she pulls her car away as right now, she gets clear view all the way up to Elizabeth. And looking both down, left and right of, of, uh, Smith Street. Now, as you can see, the existing driveway, she still has ample room to put her car on the side of her garage if, if need be. But she has more than enough adequate room when she pulls out to, to look with being a safe, you know, procedure. And that's why you have your pictures there, she took numerous pictures to show you what it looks like when she's sitting in her car, when she's standing on, looking up and down the street.
Yeah, but we agree that if a pickup truck is going to be parked in that garage and the pickup truck is twenty feet. You, you, you cannot pull the pickup truck out in its entirety without being on the street. Does that accurate statement?
It's, it is a possibility.
Well, the math would say that it is.
And it always back the truck in too.
Nobody in the way, but I mean, the point is the truck, the vehicle, if we're told that the vehicle is in the twenty foot range. The vehicle should never sit outside the garage without being on the street. Is that a clear statement?
No, there's the room, there's room alongside the garage if we wanted, if they wanted to have it outside the garage to park it without being on the street.
No, the, just the point I'm making, because we've had things like this in the past. If the pickup truck were leaving the garage. At some point, it would still be partially in the garage when it was on the street because it's too big. Is that, is that reasonable?
Well, your, your street line is, is your curb line, so it stands way further out than that seventy point six or seventy point nine.
No, I get that and that's why I specifically asked that this drawing be updated to show that, that it was. And I specifically asked that this drawing show that the front of the house is not conforming as we know it to be, but that line should be there. We know that the front of the building is not twenty-five feet from the front.
Correct.
So if the surveyor had done their job properly. The zoning lines would be overlaid on this drawing, so we could interpret. I mean, uh.
We under, we understand that completely and we agree with you in the way you're telling me that.
He needs to do that, um. All right, um. So I mean, you've been reasonable in that regard, but I'm wondering. Uh, let's look at the, these architecturals, you didn't really. Mr. Martin Tony, I believe, had, had asked you to consider changing your orientation, can you best?
Correct, so we did, uh, review trying to turn it the other way. And what is happening is where the edge of her line, her property line is, it drops like three and a half feet. So to bring the elevation up, we're looking at five feet to bring it up even till. So now you're looking at a retaining wall, which has to be engineered at a full feet. Uh, water run off, it's a considerable amount of, uh, money to involve that to be done. And just the aesthetics of having that garage turn the other way is just not going to look, it's going to cost, uh, attached to the cost. So that was.
That the drawing that has the writing entering driveway will not be a hardship?
Correct. Mr. James?
Go ahead, Mr. Martin.
Um, I agree with him.
Yeah.
And I wonder if they, they check out, you know, the grade of the signs. And I agree, especially putting a big guy in today.
It's crossing.
Just didn't work down the office and somebody was crossing.
Yep.
I'm not bringing in the film. Well, I, I was trying to get it back.
I have a question for.
Go ahead.
Do you have a truck? No. What kind of, what type of vehicle do you have? I have a twenty thirteen Buick Frost.
I'm sorry, I'm ready to the microphone, I have a twenty thirteen Buick Frost, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, let me ask board members. Do you, uh. Uh, are you in a position to digest all this information tonight? Or do you want time to consider, given again, I specifically requested that you get it to us and I understand we're. We're trying to work with you and I understand that insight hasn't met your expectations or are, as of that matter, so I think we're equally disappointed. Um, board members, if you could, give me some feedback, would you like to continue this? I mean, then because I can give you the option. If the board just thinks that they need more time. And you've decided you don't want to give us time, then you're kind of forcing us to rule. And then this model is good, we would like, you know, so let me give an honest opinion, if the members have enough information to proceed.
I would like to see the updating on the site plan, the setbacks, and then that dimension from the street and from the garage.
Any other comments?
Uh. The only other thing is I did go by the property and. I don't think if I'm looking at. With it. P six B. I don't think the distance from the side of the house to the property lines, it may be twenty-three feet as far as. Boundaries, but that entire side of the property has very, very mature, uh, out of life. That has to be approaching. Some significant amount of space.
I don't know, I think that's the truth because, um, when insight first came out to do the surveying, they have the. The landmark off. It might be.
So all that arborvitus on your neighbor's property?
No.
No, the arborvitus are like six, maybe five and a half feet from the property line. So with from one pin to the other pin, there's another row of trees behind that arborvitus that are right on the back. So this, from the arborvitus to the property line is probably about five feet.
So the arborvitus are in board?
In on, 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 yeah, this is where I was.
Anything else? Well, I mean, we can't, uh, it's not our position to, to question the veracity of a stamp from a, you know, Mr. Diiver is the surveyor in this town for many, many years, he's a seasoned professional. Uh, I know that he's in the midst of retiring and doing partial work, because frankly, insight has worked for me. Uh, in a professional capacity, so, uh, but I understand, uh. The anxiety because anyone in our related business, Mr. Belanger, me and Mr. Mark Antonio, you know. Professionals getting them to perform of late, uh, has been somewhat of an issue. However, I think, you know, uh, we're getting close to the point where the board. Could make a decision, but I think in deference to, uh, Mr. Martin, uh, does anyone else, uh, Mr. Mark Antonio or, or Mr. Nomi? Who's going?
Is it possible we can mark up the?
You have to speak into the.
Possible we can mark up the plan that everybody agrees to, we both have that plan?
Well, I, I, I imagine that. There's no reason why we couldn't. Make a decision contingent upon specific dimensions that the surveyor would then have to submit to the zoning official in order to make it legal. And if that happens in three months or two months, it doesn't matter so long as. A permit is going to be issued until such drawing is submitted, so I think the short answer is. If it's just about dimensions, you know. We, we could, I mean, we know that the building, as it sits there, is a non-conforming. We know that there's a violation that pre-exists in the front and on the side, uh, on a street side. The fact that it's not shown, yeah, it's not got to be a particular and a stickler and, and by rights, it should have been submitted. Uh, but yes, I think if Mr. Martin was okay with that. Um, we could proceed, but then, you know, the real question is the distance from the curb, I think, the pavement. How much more does the seven point six increase? I don't know if you'd be able to scan that and check.
Mr. James, my student?
Yeah.
Uh, I think it does go well for them that by, they were looking for the least, least relief necessary by not trying to get a. Side lot, you know, by keeping the side lot within the twenty feet and keeping the rear lot to forty feet. And I think that demonstrates that, that point that we would review.
Yeah, no, and, and we're, we're trying, this is a.
I, I just had a quick question, so Paul from Insight Day from down, um. Last Monday, he was dating that new insight. We taped off the driveway, the pre-existing driveway now is nineteen feet wide and twenty-three seven, right to the curb.
And that takes you, that takes you where?
Right to the outside curb on, on the street.
But if you will, from the, uh, in the interior, it ends at the stairwell, right?
No, that's the driveway.
No, no, the driveway exists, it ends at the stairwell, the deck, right? How does that, how does that correlate to the plan? Is that where the H is?
Where the existing depth is right now.
Is that where the bulkhead is? Just so we can correlate it to this drawing, the, the, so you're saying the existing drawing goes all the way back to what's called the BH, the bulkhead?
Uh.
Did you look at any of those drawings that show the bulkhead?
Yeah, it goes from, from there to the past the bulkhead, like two.
And that total distance from the curb is what?
From the curb, the curb existing driveway right now is twenty-three feet, nine inches.
Measured from?
From, from edge of the street, the.
Pavement.
The, the pavement, the vertical ground, the vertical water. To the, to the edge of the driveway and the width is nineteen feet.
The twenty-three feet wasn't mine?
Twenty-three feet, nine inches is from, from the street into the, right now, by nineteen feet wide, that's the driveway right now.
Okay, thank you, um, well, Mr. Martin, why don't you, why don't you comment, are you willing to proceed or do you want to? Is that actually big? Okay. All right, I think whatever we do, um, uh. When we make a motion, if we're going to proceed, which appears to be valid, I don't hear any other objections. So if we proceed, uh, when we make the motion, uh, Mr. Brazil, would you mind writing it? Well, that's your legal background. Uh, we would, uh, we would need to stipulate that it's contingent upon a accurate, uh. Zoning site plan, uh, compared by the engineer of record or the surveyor of record, so. We'll proceed, I mean, I think. We talked about, as much as we could talk about, uh, the, uh, nuts and bolts, if you will. So what we're being told, uh, is that. Uh, and Mr. Belanger, as I read these off, just confirm. You're telling us that thirty-eight point eight is going to become forty?
Correct.
All right? And that difference will be taken from the twenty-three feet. Uh, twenty-three foot width of the structure.
Correct.
And you've also indicated that. So if I mark up option two, which would be more relevant, option two, thirty-eight point eight will become forty. And twenty-three would be the differential between those two dimensions, okay?
Correct.
And now the only other question. In my mind, I see no, again, I, I know Elizabeth that quite well, and everybody's, and they know your family and neighbors are. Very nice people and have been there for many, many years. Uh, we had no any attendance other than the dome who was on the opposite side on Smith Street here. Uh, we will open up for public comment if you'd like to speak. Um, so the only other question to, uh, even though we would be. Creating relief of our own accord, we would be making the most relief a little bit more palatable if we. Ask them to move it back so that on option two, the interior side yard would go from twenty to nineteen. The members have any comment about that? Any yay or nay, do you have an issue with us? I mean, we're trying to do what's in the best interest of everyone, that's an interior lot line with arborvitus, so the individual impact on the butter is, is minimal at best if we grant relief. So do we have a consensus of whether we should ask, uh, them to make that nineteen instead of twenty?
I believe that would be the last. Minimum would be a five.
And what, what do you suggest, and then the seven six becomes eight foot six?
Well, by default, if the entire structure moves towards the interior line, then yeah, seven six would become eight six.
And then, I have one question after that.
Eight foot six when added to. As a plot line of showing to the curb, I'm looking at. From the, from the curb to the, to the building, yeah. We end up with, uh, what's the top line?
Well, you, you really can't tell that. He, he, he can't answer my question. He, he, he can't answer my question. It's not noted on the drawing.
Yeah.
You, you can't interpret it. I mean, I don't even know, were you able to scale the drawing? It's rudimentary. So whatever the case, we know that uh, it's at least eight foot six would be the distance to the property line.
Which you have another, to the curb, you have another.
If we, and yeah, because if you look at this picture here, we know that this P twelve, we know that technically you have only four feet according to the original variance and to the visual eye, that's clearly more than four feet. So four feet is the property line. You could almost argue that that tree is probably on the town's property. Because the name of the plant is part of.
Yeah.
Yeah. I remember they, they went around and planted trees everywhere. So, so, okay, well, that's actually four by law. According to the document, that's four feet. Okay. Yeah, so, uh, all right, then what I would suggest, it appears that the board that is is suggesting strongly, if you agree to on on option two, we're only really talking about option two now. We're suggesting strongly that you agree to change the interior lot line and it would be an encroachment of one foot so that it would be nineteen feet as opposed to twenty. Would you agree to that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Archibald, are you with us? Did you see there?
Yes.
Uh, Steve, is there, I, I don't, we don't, we don't intend to do something incorrect. Uh, do we have the legal authorities to suggest that the twenty-foot interior lot line setback, which is conforming? Do we have any authority to suggest that they push it in that direction to therefore minimize the relief, uh, on the other side? Is that appropriate?
You're into, what's a great question. You, you don't have the authority to make a conforming lot, non-conforming by changing the, the, uh, minimum amount that he already complies with to something that he may not comply with. However, you're only in discussions right now and and talking about the idea of what relief can be granted. So I would suggest that the, the meeting has sort of turned into a, a dialogue between you and the applicant, the board and the applicant as to, you know, what possibilities would present the, the least relief necessary? And I think that's obvious. So, um, to answer you sort of the best way I can, you, you don't have the authority to compel that they do it, but you're, you're in a dialogue to suggest it. And then if the applicant comes back with that request for relief, you certainly could grant it. Does that help?
Thank you. And in essence, the applicant, Mr. Uh, Mr. Rado, uh, on your behalf, would you accept that since you're the applicant?
Yes.
And did you hear that?
Yes.
You didn't, thank you. All right, so the applicant is telling the board that they will modify P eight to have the zoning overlay, which the surveyor will do, modify, revise the interior setback from twenty feet to nineteen and to increase the rear setback from thirty-eight point eight to forty. Well, that's part of the fault. Well, it's, well.
You see, you push that, get a back wall back. You don't see pushing on that.
Yeah, but you, if you're maintaining twenty-two feet, like that's. Yeah, by definition, we're, we're maintaining twenty-two feet by definition. It's going to go towards the interior. No, but implicit in the, in the, if we're, if we're, but to be specific, uh, we're asking the applicant to agree that the rear setback from the proposed structure to the interior lot line will be nineteen feet instead of twenty. And if the structure as noted on option two is twenty-two feet by definition, seven point six will become eight point six. Okay, and then as noted also, the twenty-three foot width would become the differential between forty and thirty-eight point eight. So is that all agreed upon?
Yes.
You're accepting of that, the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. All right, with that being said, I think unless we have any more specific questions with the applicant, uh, uh, you can, you know, you can return to your seats if you'd like. Um, we'll keep the, uh, applicant's presentation open for a moment. And we do have two members of the public here. We can open it up for public comment if either of you choose to comment. Do you choose not to comment? Okay, so will we have a motion to close public comment?
Just one more.
Have a motion to close public comment? We have a motion, Mr. Archibald, second?
Second.
All of them there?
Aye.
All right, back to you, Mr. Belanger.
So we're just getting clear of, uh, so we're going to do the forty for the rear. The sideline is going to be nineteen. And then when I push it from Smith back to eight foot six, the building will still remain twenty-two feet deep.
And the twenty-three will change for the differential?
Yeah, it'll change by sixteen inches, correct. Insight will proceed to do that with a document and then we'll just overlay anything back.
Yeah, they, we, you, you need to insist because the zoning official will require, uh, and our, our, uh, uh, motion, if it's, if it passes, will dictate that he must show what the existing zoning map overlay is. Okay, so it's clear where the, where the non-conformities already exist. And just for the record, so that that's. Be good? Members good with that? All right, applicant's good with that? Okay, with that being said, if we have no further questions for the applicant, do we want to close that? Or do you have any questions? Do you have a motion to close the presentation, the applicant?
I'll make that motion second.
All of them there?
Aye.
All right, vote, okay. So we'll move into deliberation again, but it's a little outstanding here, one of them. Okay, well, we had, uh, we had talked about this somewhat in great length uh, during the first, uh, presentation at due this meeting. And I'll run through this, but you know, frankly, at this point, my normal tendency with with the structure of this size is to not be in favor of modifying or expanding, excuse me, upon a non-conforming. But as was indicated from the applicant, you know, God, they're too massive. Now, in a greater sense, and to treat each applicant with, uh, respect and, uh, try our best to flush things out and and work to a compromise if at all possible uh, with commend the applicant and and doing as much as they could short of, getting, gets the information on time, short of their frustrations with the surveyor. So it really comes down to the nuts and the bolts of we have a non-conforming, uh, existing building that was reconstructed as part of a zoning action and had been abandoned or had been abandoned. It was empty for many, many years. A lawyer went and purchased it, went to the town, said the building's no good. Uh, he granted him the relief to tear it down and rebuild it, which for all intent and purpose, he had every right to do. Uh, and because you own a non-conforming lot, doesn't mean that the town can say, no, you have the right to do something. But within reason. But the only thing I would say is that it stands to reason from reading the decision, you know, for whatever it's worth for the record, if you read the decision that we call the one of us, the middle of the doesn't matter, it's a decision from the zoning board, they don't have enough. Or it's P five. Uh, if we, if we read the decision, no, P five, the, the decision from the zoning board, two thousand twelve, uh, they indicated that, of course, when they granted the, uh, variance, they noted that they did not increase upon the non-conformity. So it stands to reason that if at the time the builder said, I know by the way, I need to add a garage, it stands to reason that at that time it would have been rejected because it would have been a backification of the non-conformity. You know, this is twenty odd years later. So let me go to nine point three point one A. Um, again, as we know, uh, this is the criteria on which the board needs to substantiate and base this decision. Uh, nine point three point one A, the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. And it is not due to a physical or economic disability happens. We know there's no physical or economic disability. Uh, but the hardship, you know, hardship can be defined in ten different ways. Uh, from my reading and research, the, you know, the need for a garage is not necessarily a hardship. Uh, if it was the need to put a, uh, in-law or or to expand upon it for for something else, uh, physical disability backward, uh, possibly to consider the a hardship or or some other reason that related to the building to live across. Uh, but in the same light, um, we know that the majority of the property in that immediate area, uh, the comp, the interior, the, the, the butter to the, to the south, the interior lot line, that's a relatively small lot, but all of the other lots in the general area are part of a subdivision that was, uh, built, you know, within the last fifteen, twenty years. So this land is unique in that regard. We also know that we granted the, uh, variance to build two buildings at the top of Elizabeth. Uh, that two men about a year and a half, two years ago, those two non-conforming lots that had evolved from the subdivision that was good development. Uh, they were very small lots, um, and of course we granted that because they were able to put the smallest house possible. So the hardship, you know, the need for a garage can be understood in one respect and in another, you know, you, you can see it both ways. Uh, B, that the hardship is not the result of any prior action. The applicant does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. Uh, both of those are true, the applicant has done nothing. Uh, other than to buy the house and did nothing, uh, prior action that they can be responsible for, they didn't build the house, they bought it. And there is no economic gain since their, it's her house. Uh, C, that granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or any of the intent or purpose of this zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which this ordinance is based. Uh, you know, in this, in this case, again, anytime we entertain granting, uh, the variance, uh, all of these requirements are somewhat subjective and can be pushed and pulled in different directions. There are very few non-conforming house lots in the immediate area, two at the top of a hill that we know of. And it's possible that the house just to the south, if you will, downhill could be non-conforming because of the physical science of the house. It appears to be a small lot.
The only thing that I would also ask to that, Mr. Chairman, is that nearly all the houses in that area do have a garage.
Yeah, and they're all part of, uh, a lot of them were part of the subdivision that was built.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, there are some older homes that, you know, were at least five thousand square feet or greater. Um, so, you know, that's, that's true in that regard. We do know though that the, uh, the ordinance and the comprehensive plan, the ordinance specifically says that, you know, they discourage expansion of non-conforming structures. But again, that's why you apply for variance because, uh, you have the right to. And I did mention the fact that the zoning board initially mentioned the fact that, uh, they actually reduced the size of the house from the one that was there previously. Uh, item D, that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary. The applicant has shown their willingness, um, and has worked with the board to have worked with the board to, uh, modify the location and the physical footprint of the building. Uh, and I think it's reasonable to conclude that, uh, if the relief were granted, it is the least relief necessary to give the applicant the garage and the tax breezeway that they, that she desires. Uh, I mean, the granting of any request will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this ordinance or to other land, structures or buildings in this district. Um, you know, clearly you're always granting the very nature of the variance is that you're granting that special privilege. Um, however, as members have noted, the, many of the subdivision homes, almost all of them, I believe, all of them have garages. Uh, many of the pre-existing homes on Elizabeth and Saninac have detached garages. So, uh, that is not a special privilege in that regard. The only thing that you put the fine is a special privilege is the fact that, you know, you're being granted relief on a non-conforming. Nine point three point two, yeah. Uh, that's not applicable because it's a used variance and that's not for, uh, entertaining. Uh, nine point three point two B, in granting a dimensional variance, if a hardship that will be suffered by the owner of the subject property of this dimensional variance is not granted, shall amount to more than a mere inconvenience. Um, and for board members, we, we're, we're striking the, the, the next sentence. Uh, that the law has changed in that regard, so we are not entertaining that. That comes from counsel and you would strike, which shall mean that there is no other reasonable alternative to enjoy legally committed judicial use of one's property. That, that was tricked by the Superior Court or the general laws of the league. So, uh, your books will be updated at some point. Uh, so the, the last sentence is, is perished so loud that the, the fact that use may be more profitable or the structure may be, uh, more valuable after the relief was granted, shall not be grounds for. Typically, uh, the need for additional parking or garage is not considered, uh, uh, more than a, a variant. It means it's considered an inconvenience for the most part. But again, uh, this is somewhat subjective. Uh, it can be looked at in all directions, so. Any other input on all of those items?
Well, she, the applicant definitely stated that, uh, she's afraid of getting hurt. So in, you know, granting her the, um, application, she'd be able to stay at home and stay in her house. And I think this is what we have to, um, really look at also with the COVID and the pandemic that we had. A lot of people stayed in the homes now. So they're doing a lot more things, even though this is a non-conforming, she's afraid of her health. So I know we've had another case where application where she had a hard time going into the house with a V or whatever, but it was because of safety issues. And she definitely said in her testimony that she was afraid of breaking a hip. So, um, we really have to think about the citizen's safety and welfare. It's, uh, not just about the non-conforming lot, I really do. It's not just about the non-conforming lot, I really do believe it has a lot more to do with the applicant's safety.
Thank you, other members?
Yeah, so looking at section four, which is market comment lots and market comment use plan and market comment structures. I'm just wondering if you missed anything on this, because if you look, I'll just read a section of a paragraph. So this provision, provision shall not apply to expansion, extension or enlargement of the residential structure located in the same district, which expansion, extension or enlargement you can grant of every specialty permit. Is that, is that saying that they need to get a special unit to be able to expand that non-conforming?
What they do?
Four one.
Four one?
Yeah.
And where, where are you reading?
This should not apply to expansion, extension or enlargement of residential structure located in the same district. Which expansion, extension or enlargement may be granted by a special use permit. Are they saying they would allow it if they were allowed to be in the special use permit?
No.
It's still a residential building.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, special use permit is only as relates to use, not this is a dimensional, this is a dimensional variance. So it can't be interpreted as any other than a variance, and the reason we define, you have both, you have non-conforming uses of land, clearly in the use panel, and then you have non-conforming, non-conforming lots and structures. Where this is a non-conforming, both, a non, non-conforming lot. Structure's conforming, but the lot isn't, because the structure is located over the line, so. So I don't think there's anything, I think the action is valid. In bottom line, if this was not a non-conforming lot, then this, they wouldn't be appearing in front of the board, because they have the right to build a garage. And the reason they're here is because they, they, they she occupied a non-conforming structure which sits on, because it sits on a non-conforming lot. And the only part of section four that's kind of irrelevant is that if you're going to, the very nature that you need a variance is the function of the fact that you aren't meeting the setbacks. And the only thing that this really speaks to is that right here on section four point four A, no such non-conforming structure may be enlarged or altered in a way which increases its non-conformity. And that's exactly what's happening here, but that's why you ask for relief. The, the book says you can't, but that's why this board exists, to entertain requests to go against the book.
So we will also apply that to the lot coverage, that there we have twenty percent?
Well, yeah, yeah, it's all part of the second.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to point out that while it's undeniable that approving this application and adding a structure is going to increase the non-conformity of the lot, you do have to note that the book placement and the location of the structure is actually utilizing the conforming area of the lot.
Well, it's a good point, because the other, the other issue that made no sense when they granted the original relief is why they didn't make
wasn't to tuck it in.
At least center it in the lot so that you conform as best you could. We, we can't comment necessarily, or, or we can only look at what that zoning board did. But they clearly had the ability, as you said, to reduce the forefoot in street side yard, et cetera. And instead, they allowed it to exist and, and just perpetuate a, a problem. So it's a valid point that you're making, is that in both directions, you know, we've asked them and they agreed, but we suggested and they accepted that the rear is compliant and the side yard is compliant within a foot. And the only bracket forced by the board were suggesting that nineteen feet is less than the magnitude of in non-conformity on the street side, so. It's a, it's a valid point, any other members? Okay, here none, do we have, our last for motion, but what we should do is in the motion note that the relief is approved, and for those of the audience, when we make a motion, we make it in the affirmative, and then we either vote yea or nay. That P eight, which is variance plan option two, as amended at the meeting, which is thirty eight point eight becomes forty. Twenty three in the width becomes, is, is, is reduced by sixteen inches. Twenty, the interior side setback is reduced to nineteen. And the front convention goes from seven six to eight six. And that the drawing, when it is amended, if the relief is granted, the surveyor is to overlay the zoning setbacks onto the ground.
When I make the motion, can I summarize that in a way that just says amended in compliance with the
Yeah.
The instant variances that have been granted? And essentially, that's what it is. I'm going to say in the motion, for example, that if I'm to live this side, that the
No, no, there are.
It's going to be reduced from twenty, twenty feet to eight point six feet and
That's the Smith Street side.
That's the Smith Street side, and then I would say the other side, uh, would be reduced from twenty feet to nineteen.
Yeah, and then the thirty eight point eight becomes forty.
Okay, yeah, and right, and a rare benefit.
Yeah, and what I'll do is to make it official, I will initial, if the relief is granted, I will initial P eight and indicate that this origin, let me approve, that it's granted, what you said. Thirty eight point eight becomes forty, twenty three is less sixteen inches, and twenty becomes nineteen, and by default, nine seven point six will be eight six. So if the relief is granted, I will initial this as dated, if that's sufficient, that should plus be at the record. And the applicant has already agreed to all of those things verbally, so. And that'll make your question. So with that being said, can we have a motion?
I make the motion that application ZBR twenty two dash zero two dated March eighth, two thousand twenty two, made by applicant Donald Rado of premises one eighteen Elizabeth Avenue, Mount Smithfield, seeking relief from section four point four, instructing on a non-conforming use lot, and also seeking dimensional variances under section five points five point one, the following varying dimensions I hear would be changed as follows. That the side setback on the Smithside Street of opposed option under this P eight, be reduced from twenty feet to eight point six feet, that the other side would be reduced from twenty feet to nineteen feet, and that the rear setback be amended from thirty eight point eight feet to forty feet.
Okay, the only thing you, the only thing you should note is that section four point two, four point four, non-conforming lot, right? And the relief for the coverage is, is, is part and parcel of the prevention of the breach, so. And I think the only other thing you should note, if you wrote it down, I think you missed the side, the Smith Street side goes from seven point six to eight point six.
This, this is Jim, as you can hear, and then the repeat, we submitted those directions on it.
So I just did from that, according to the statute, the rear setback is twenty feet. I just said we're allowing it to be twenty feet to eight point six.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood, yep, okay, then that's happened, yep, okay.
You agree that they have submitted the P eight, that doesn't happen?
Yeah, yeah, and we'll indicate, you can add to that in this facility if you like, because I meant that, that they updated.
Right, said motion is P eight. Subject to a revised and updated exhibit P eight in compliance with the relief approved given.
Including the zoning overlay. Okay, if there was any doubt, I mean, you know, we can just go from there. Alright, is there a second for that?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second, then do we need to have it read back or pick this around for a long time? I think we all understand. With that being said, the roll call, please.
Robert Nigerian.
Yes.
Scott Martin.
Yes.
Alpat Grohl. He wasn't around, but, did he mark anyone else? Yeland and Omi.
Yes.
Christopher Zidio.
Yes. Okay, congratulations, good luck, we appreciate your consideration and working with us to resolve and come to a reasonable conclusion. We truly accept all of it. Okay. With that, we have item number nine, we have a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn, second?
I'll second.
All of them there?
Aye.
Oh, wait, I shouldn't have adjourned. I just wanted to take a moment, well, it doesn't matter, it's off the record, but it's on the record, so. I make a motion that we reconvene for five minutes, second? I'll then, okay, we'll reconvene for five minutes, then we'll be left to that. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate our zoning and building official on his retirement. I hope he announces, all this is public record, is enough. By now, it is. Well, it, it is effective as of March, April first, so I just want, we won't have a meeting prior to that, so. I didn't want to close without extending our best wishes for him, happy retirement. And thanks for other professional and reasoned execution of your duties, it was a pleasure to work with you. And we just hope that your replacement will be of equal caliber, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll take a moment, you're adjourned, maybe here. Motion to adjourn, all of them there, second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I couldn't let it go down.
Steve, have a good night. Thank you, everyone, have a nice night.
Thanks.